The city council meeting for September 4th. I'd like, please, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your great mother from which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, the role.
Mayor Virchell?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Yakub?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, T. Winkle?
Here.
District five, Hackett?
Here.
District six, Banzlo, is excused.
At this point, we will call on Jamie Johnson, has a comment that he'd like to make. Jamie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here as president of the Hudson Daybreak Club. The Paul Harris Fellowship is named for Paul Harris, who founded Rotary with three business associations in Chicago in 1905. The fellowship was established in his honor in 1957 to express appreciation for contributions to the humanitarian and educational programs of the Rotary Foundation. Those programs include an array of projects that save and invigorate the lives of people around the world and enhance international friendship and understanding. These activities are implemented and managed by Rotarians and Rotary Clubs around the globe. Rotarians also designate a Paul Harris Fellow to recognize non-Rotarians whose life demonstrates a shared purpose with the objectives and mission of the Rotary Foundation to build world understanding and peace. The motto of Rotary is service above self. And our Hudson Daybreak Club has a creed, and that creed states, "We are a group of business leaders who represent the community fabric of the St. Croix Valley. We believe in enhancing opportunities for youth and creating a better community for all. We practice honesty, integrity, goodwill, fellowship, and fun through local and international service." And our current annual theme for Rotary, international theme, is peace through service. So today, we move closer to a more peaceful world as Denny Donald becomes a Paul Harris Fellow. Is Paul Harris at his? Denny? Would you like to come forward? Denny, you were selected to receive this recognition because the Hudson Daybreak Rotary Club believes that your life exemplifies the humanitarian and educational objectives of the Rotary Foundation. We thank you for demonstrating in your life and vocation a commitment to helping persons in need here and around the community of Hudson. Denny has been and continues to be very involved with the St. Patrick Church and School. Denny was an active volunteer with the St. Patrick's Golf Event for years, which has raised tens of thousands of dollars for their athletic department and the benefit of all students of St. Patrick's. He coached boys and girls' youth basketball while his children attended school there. And as an active member of the Knights of Columbus, he continues to organize and run the annual free throw contest open to all youth in the Hudson area. Denny's current job, of course, is that of planning and zoning director for the city of Hudson. In that role, it's his job to ensure that Hudson has orderly growth when it comes to the planning and zoning of the residential and commercial properties within the city limits. And he works with city council on the mayor and has also worked with third graders, who come and meet with Denny and the mayor, along with the fire department and EMS. And he talks about city planning and how that relates to what they learn in junior achievement. So therefore, it gives me great pleasure, as the president of the Hudson Daybreak Club, to present you, on behalf of the trustees of the Rotary Foundation, the two emblems of a Paul Harris Fellow, this certificate and the lapel pin. The certificate states that you have been named a Paul Harris Fellow, and in appreciation and of tangible and significant assistance given for the furtherance of better understanding and friendly relations among peoples of the world. We urge you to wear the Paul Harris Fellow pin to all Rotary events as a symbol of your appreciation for and support of the programs of the Rotary Foundation. And please accept congratulations and sincere appreciation for your commitment to our common goals of world understanding and peace and creating a better community for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Congratulations, Denny. Is there anyone else, at this point in the program, we have comments for someone to make to the council that is not on the agenda tonight? So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council and talk to us on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay, let's move on. Consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of August 20th, 2012, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $395,595.26. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of one regular operator's license for the period September 5th, 2012 to June 30th, 2014, contingent on payment of outstanding debt owed to the city. And the issuance of four temporary operator licenses to be used September 21st through 23rd, 2012, at St. Patrick's Fall Festival. Additional operator license information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B Retailer's License to St. Patrick's Parish to sell beer and wine at the annual St. Patrick's Fall Festival on September 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, 2012, at 1500 Vine Street. To approve the appointment of Darlene Krier, 621 Hickory Road, as an undesignated election inspector for the term September 5th, 2012 through December 31st, 2013, with the consideration that after training she may serve as a special registration deputy or special voting deputy for election-related duties at the Christian Community Home if needed. To approve the schedule of the 2013 Common Council meeting dates as presented. To approve the St. Patrick's 5K walk run to be held Saturday, September 22nd, 2012, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
You pull that, please.
To place on file the quarterly reports of the Parks and Public Works Director and the August 29th, 2012 minutes of the Community Access Board and the August 21st, 2012 minutes of the St. Croix EMS Commission. That is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
Okay. First order of business is the planning commission for a conditional use permit for Hudson Hospital, Inc., and Health Partners to waive the required side and rear building setbacks pursuant to zoning code, Chapter 255-22, for proposed medical office building at 405 St. Line Road. Mr. Donald?
Good evening. The planning commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit to Health Partners and Hudson Hospital Incorporated. This waiver of side and rear yard setbacks, this is typically not a consideration. A lot of times, we go perhaps through a variance procedure. Here, we have a building that's integrated part of, in addition to the existing hospital clinics facility. Health Partners and Hudson Hospital desires to create a second lot. The building will be on the second lot, but through this waiver process, we will allow them to construct the building within 10 feet of the rear and side yard setbacks and also zero where the lobby area between the proposed medical office building and the hospital connects. So, and there's one comment at the public hearing from a resident located east of the hospital facility. He wondered how close the building, because he was thinking with a waiver of side yard setback, it'd be only a few feet away from the side property line. But with the larger hospital property, the building actually will be no closer than 180 feet of those residences to the east and located in the town of Hudson. So the planning commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit to waive the rear and side yard setbacks as applicable to lots one and two of the certified survey map, which would be the next item for discussion.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some moves.
Second.
Discussion. Questions? Kurt or John, any questions?
No, sir.
I guess, or?
None for me either.
Okay. Randy? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is certified survey map for two lots, 405 St. Line Road, south of St. Line Road and east of Center Drive, Hudson Hospital, Inc.
Okay, and this is the same location, 405 St. Line Road, where the Hudson Hospital currently exists. What is proposed is two lots. They will group the area that has been the Hudson Hospital property with the approximate 20-acre area, or 15-acre area that was annexed recently into the city of Hudson. Lot one will be the Hudson Hospital Incorporated location, the parking lots and the stormwater retention area, and then open areas along the eastern side of the parcel. Lot two will be the proposed 41,000-square-foot medical office building. Lot two can exist as that because it does have emergency access. Easement is being provided to it. Also, another part of this consideration is, is that there will be a joint parking agreement between Hudson Health Partners and Hudson Hospital, which will address off-street parking. Planning commission recommends approval of the certified survey map.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, final plat, Red Cedar Canyon Pleasant View, 22 one-family lots and three outlots, Red Cedar Canyon Plan Residential District, Hanshagen Homes.
This final plat of Red Cedar Canyon Pleasant View creates 22 one-family residential lots that are in conformance of the preliminary plats or revised preliminary plats that have been approved for Red Cedar Canyon Plan Residential development previously. Mr. John Rass from Hanshagen Homes is here. Again, the planning commission recommends approval of the final plat of Red Cedar Canyon Pleasant View with the contingency that the plat may not be filed until the development agreement is executed between Hanshagen Homes and the city of Hudson.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Questions? Comments?
I'd say, well, how many, I don't know how many homes are actually in Red Cedar Canyon.
A lot.
John, do you know?
I think there's approximately 330 over the master plan. Now, that includes both single-family homes and the townhome considerations. Now, I believe after the original master plan was approved, the number of units declined a little bit because they adjusted some of the areas. I think probably, and I'm kind of seated, pass guess, John, probably around 300 to 310 units total.
Okay.
There's a question, the planning commission denied how many lots are left for single-family development. John estimated between 45 and 50.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Donald. Review bids and accept proposal for the purchase of a 2013 Ford Explorer vehicle for the Hudson Police Department.
Chief Jensen could not be here this evening. We opened the bids on Thursday. The low bid was from Hudson Ford, and the finance committee recommended approval, or purchase the vehicle from Hudson Ford.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
If you notice, I think this is less than what we paid for the last one.
10,000, right?
How much?
How much less?
Oh, I think the last one was about, was about what the other two were. I think it was 25, 26, something like that. Once we get all the pieces, parts in it, I think it gets closer to the 35, then.
Yeah, 6,800 to put all the stuff.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request of Health Partners for extension of time for removal of houses and private septic systems and wells as stipulated in the annexation and development agreement February 5th, 2010.
In 2010, the city of Hudson had an ex property located east of the southerly extension of Banterra Drive. This area is generally located east of the Hudson Chrysler Auto Dealership located on Pearson Drive, east of Carmichael Road, and south of Center Drive. Health Partners is requesting to be able to extend the period of time upon which the four single-family residences located in that area are required to be hooked up or be removed. The current contract of annexation, typically, we don't like to have residences on septic systems and wells within the city of Hudson. And at the time the annexation agreement was prepared, there was a proposal to do a 80, I believe, an 80-unit memory care senior housing project. That project no longer is being proposed. Health Partners, Mr. Frank McLone is here to explain a little bit more, but is really not prepared to remove the homes or connect up at this point and respectfully request a six-month extension from January 31st of 2013 to July 31st of 2013 before they remove the homes or connect to sanitary sewer, public sanitary sewer and water. Again, to extend, to connect the homes, you have to extend sanitary sewer and water. It's just not a matter of, so there's trunk systems that would have to be extended. I did visit with Mr. Tim Cruz, our water utility director. He is okay with extending. I did not have an opportunity yet to talk with Jim Schreiber. We do not know of any septic problems that exist out there. Finance Committee recommended approval of the extension to hook up to sanitary sewer and water for a six-month period from January 31st, 2013 to July 31st, 2013. Mr. Frank McLone is here from Health Partners to answer or address any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for?
I'll make a motion for approving the extension.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Comments?
All these homes are lived in, right?
Yes, they're all, they're all presently granted and occupied.
What is the plan that will change within six months?
I, I.
I mean, six months is, it goes by fast, so.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, council. Currently, we're contemplating a few things. If you, as I mentioned at the finance committee, Randy had some really good question, and we just announced a major combination, i.e. merger, with Park Nicklet on the west side of town. And so we'll be working through that particular issue. We're also putting the new MOB on the hospital campus. So I guess the bottom line is, our real estate area is fairly focused on doing other areas. We really haven't had an opportunity to really take a look at what our strategic need is for the Banterra properties. But I would say that we, as I said at the finance committee, plan to fulfill our obligation relative to the impact fees of paying the $74,000.
Did that answer your question, Kurt? Kind of?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Have these been rezoned commercial?
No.
So there's still?
I'll let Denny answer.
Zoning is a medium family residential, because the proposed use when bougie properties, annexed a property to the city, actually is zoned when it's an extraterritorial zoning area, is zoned to medium family residential, brought in at time of annexation. So the current zoning is medium family residential. It's not commercial. And Health Partners well-understood that when they purchased the property.
So basically, they're just asking for more time to make their decision. They're sticking with their commitment. As far as the impact fees, I mean, I guess I don't see a problem with it. So I'll make a motion to approve the, I did that already.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item in these, funding for Hudson Area Joint Library. Neil? Is Neil here?
The council's a bit of a decision point with regard to the Hudson Joint Library. We've been, the, St. Croix County has a September 24th deadline for the city to take action to make a commitment to providing sufficient funding for, in 2013, to qualify for an exemption from the county library levy. What this would mean is we would have to commit to a funding level that would be an increase of roughly $270,000 over what we're currently funding. And the current, the current amount for this past year was $281,000 roughly. So what we're looking at really is almost 100% increase in that funding. If no action is taken, the residents of the city of Hudson and the other member, well, and the other members of the community would be subject to the county library levy. And the county library levy, Neil, and this, this would change subject to other, any of the other communities, you know, becoming exempt. And I, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, a few of those communities are meeting tonight at their board meeting. But what would end up happening is the taxpayers of this community would pay an additional $277,000 to the county. And the taxpayers of the four communities that comprise the Hudson Area Joint Library would pay an additional $569,000 to the county. And our library, the Hudson Area Joint Library, will receive only $82,000 of that and no additional money for this additional payments to the county in terms of the county library levy. So if there's no action taken, what would end up happening is the county portion of taxpayers' tax bills will go up to reflect the, you know, the county library levy.
John and Kurt and Mary, you were here for, I think, finance, correct?
I was here for most of it.
Most of it, when we talked about the library?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
Well, there's a couple of their options out there. We might want to hear them again.
You have specific questions on it, or?
I've, the one question is, or statement that can be made, is that we can't avoid paying library taxes, no matter what we do. Either the county collects them or the Hudson collects them. So it seems that it would be nice if we could keep as much of our own tax money and put it back into our own library as possible. That's kind of where I'm coming from in my, how I'm seeing this riddle, I guess we'll call it. And it sounds like we had a couple of options from finance that, I know it's late in the game, and there are some legalities going on, but it seems like there is an opportunity, even the slimmest of opportunity, to change something that we could at least ride out ahead of the game in 2013, rather than just saying, well, the county's going to get this amount of money, and we're only going to get this amount back. So I guess I'm kind of thinking that, hey, why don't we try to be aggressive and come up and hear a couple of other scenarios and see if they're even remotely possible. I did meet with Roy, and he has, excuse me, asked for an extension of time from county council to at least consider other options that might come down the pike, so.
I think, I would think we'd be very open to looking at every option that we possibly could.
Agreed. That's kind of where I'm at, too.
Right. I think the issue that Neil points out, if we don't do anything, the county will make the assessment for us.
It's pretty academic, yeah.
Yep.
Just to go off what John's saying, I, the other two options that John's referring to, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, both of them put us on the hook for an extra $90,000 a year that will be?
They, there's a potential. You know, if, one of the things that, there was a bill that went through the Assembly, was approved by committee in the Senate and was not voted on in that last week the Senate was in session. Had that gone through, what, you know, what would have happened is, as long as the community funded the library according to the maintenance of effort standards, you would automatically be exempt from the county library levy.
Okay.
Now, you know, where this comes into play is that if that effort, an effort similar to that went through again this year, and we increased our funding, and when we talk about maintenance of effort, what maintenance of effort means is you're funding the library at a level the average of the last three years. And we've been right around that $180,000 or $280,000 the last three years. Well, if all of a sudden, we increase our funding for next year, and a bill goes through like this, we could be exempt, but it would put us on the hook to find another $90,000, you know, roughly, you know, one, or one-third of the, you know, $270,000 increase. In addition, it basically raises our base by $90,000. And the question is, where does that money come from?
And that would be part of our operating account.
That would become part of our operating account. That's correct.
My other issue I would have had is that when Rich spoke, the recommendation came from the library board, and I don't know, Roy, if we're, if you just kind of dotted this on your own or what, but I believe that it didn't come from the library board as a recommendation. I don't know if the library board would even agree, I don't even, you know, if they would even agree with that suggestion, or, I mean.
May I speak? Can I speak, Anna?
Well, yeah, okay. Is that a question?
Yeah, well, do you know what I'm saying? If we're supposed to be taking recommendations from the library board, and it seems as if, I don't know if that, if that came through the library board?
Rich's recommendation, maybe?
Well, Rich had a recommendation that came from the library board, and I know that Roy worked on the steering committee or what have you, but I don't know which power we're supposed to be, uh.
There was a, if I could address your question. We both have authority. His comes more recently, mine comes from the board action that was passed back in June. So if you examine that, that's, one of the four principles of that resolution was to seek a levy transfer.
Okay.
And that's what we actually have now as part of our proposal. So they're both proper authority.
Okay. We've had so much difficulty discussing this issue with all this data in front of us. I'm having a real hard time talking about a completely new proposal. We have no hard numbers in front of us. We didn't all get the email this morning. Even if I had, I don't think I could have digested it by tonight. So what I'm wondering is, can we make a decision as a council and then, you know, barring that some other proposal comes together between now and September 24th, can we just say we're making a decision? And if something else can be worked out, we'll entertain it, but.
Certainly.
I just feel like we have to come to some agreement and.
I like that approach, and also, there was a recommendation on the finance committee.
Yeah.
And could we clarify that for the rest of the members?
I think it was to become, let the county tax go through.
So basically, do nothing.
Correct.
Do nothing.
So if the county tax goes through, what, how is that going to raise taxes?
Well, first of all, my, my point of view, I'm sorry. Yep. Neil, could you answer that question then?
What would happen is, on your tax bill, you know, it's divided between, you know, the various taxing jurisdictions, you know, the county, the city, the school district, WITC, and the state.
Right.
And the county portion would go up in an amount roughly $20 per $100,000.
Valuation.
Dollars of valuation was kind of the rough number.
Great. So the average home is probably going to have a $60 tax increase for the library, between a $40 and $60 tax increase for the library funding.
On top of what we...
Because there's about an equal amount that's going on already as part of the revenue.
Right, but and that money doesn't even go really back to our own library.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. That makes sense.
It always does.
Well, no, it's horrible, I'd rather...
I'm also not a big fan of the do-nothing scenario, just because we're doing nothing. We have two weeks till the, we, 24th is still not a council meeting away. We can vote on it in a couple of weeks. Might be nice to actually go through the effort to see if this is even possible, because if it is, it actually, I realize there's a couple of hooks in there, but it's, it seems like we have an opportunity to do something a little bit different.
I can't even understand what that something different is, because it's been a lot of, you know...
Essentially, it's the legal levy transfer that allows us to use the other money, and we don't have to come up with additional funds. We actually use less funds. The funds that we do end up putting into the system go back 100% to the library, not back into the county pool.
There are additional funds.
Yeah, you have to, you'd get the levy limit transferred from the participating municipalities, but you would have, the city would have to increase its levy by that amount, so by the 200-some thousand.
So either that amount is going to the county, or that amount is going to be on the city's tax.
And, and then you're...
So it is an increase.
And that's suggesting that the other cities aren't going to need, need to use that money, and they can transfer it to us, is, is that what I'm understanding?
They can't use the transfer, my understanding, is they can't use the, they can't transfer it to us and say, now we have this money available.
Right. To me, to me, both those, I think the whole thing stinks. We have a police department that's being funded, or operations of $186,000 a year funds the operations of our police department. We have, you know, a fire department and ambulance service, that we are, just got out of the water, you know, are, from below the waters. And I think the biggest problem in all of this is the other options put us on a hook for more money that we don't have. Even if it sounds like a better deal for the library, it's more money that we don't have. And I agree with what Lori said in, in finance. I mean, the county did this, so the county can take the fall. I don't agree with this vote, I'm not happy making this vote, but the county did it. So let them deal with the taxpayers. I'm, I don't have a desire to...
I totally appreciate the sentiment, but you're going to still have to pay the money.
Yeah. No, we are, yeah, we're all going to have to pay, 13% more. But it's not going to come from the city taxing the taxpayers, it's going to come from the county. That's how, I'm not...
This is, I just want to share this again for people who didn't see that finance. This is what county library funding has done since they instated this new funding mechanism. It's increased 40% over the last four years. 40%, because we're funding, they're funding it at 100%. They've taken away any local control. Guess what happens when you fund something at 100%? You get a lot more of it. And so, it's not, it's not subject, it's not subject to the state levy limits. They can spend virtually anything they want. The county made this decision. They had a chance to correct it this year, and they chose not to. They saw the impact it was having on the joint library, they chose to stick with it.
Mayor.
Excuse me?
Yep, we're, we're talking here.
They chose to stick with their funding mechanism despite knowing what effect it was going to have on our joint library. I don't think it's incumbent upon city residents to, all of a sudden, come up with ways to cut other areas of our budget to accommodate it. Let the county deal with it. If someone can show me in the next two weeks, or by the 24th, a great way that we can somehow make this all work with no impact to city residents, no impact to the city budget, and increase funding to the library, let's do it. It's, we're kind of at the 12th hour.
And, and I agree. I don't have enough information about this big shell game we're trying to look at playing here. That's what it seems like to me. We're moving this to hide this, to go here, to go there. I'm not comfortable with that.
I don't trust it.
Well, it sounds good, but what's the hitch?
Yep.
There's always a hitch. And I, I do agree with that. I want you guys to think that I'm trying to put everything out here at risk. To be clear, we are going to pay these taxes no matter what. And I understand that the county is the bad guy here, and I appreciate that as well. What I am saying is, because they have no library levy limits, why don't we try to maintain as much control of the money as we possibly can without letting it go to the county? And that's the, that's where I'm seeing the advantage here, that's it, basically.
I think what you're hearing is, people would be open to that in the next two weeks, but the rubber's hitting the road and...
I would be, yep, I would be open to it in the next two weeks, but I'm also more receptive to see if it can be changed at a state level. We don't need to, I agree with Randy, we don't need to be shuffling money around throughout, it's just, it's just, to me, a very dangerous game to start playing. I mean, $1,063,000, $63,041, that's one-third of the police department budget in our city, and it's going to the library. I mean, that's a lot.
Not our library.
Not our library, but every other, but my point is, that's a lot of money. You know, I'm just, I'm just, just shocked, I guess.
To me, it's like this...
With the situation we're in, with the economy we're in, I'm just shocked that the county would, would do this. So, I, I, was there a motion on the table?
No, there hasn't been.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, to support the finance recommendation.
Is there a second?
A second.
I would like, Roy, three minutes, or can you, can you make it three or five minutes? If you, if you want.
I represent this city on the library board. I've been on the board for two and a half years. I've been the past president. I've been the finance chair for three years. To do nothing, counsel, is a big mistake. Big mistake. Here's why. If you do nothing, what that means is that I, as a taxpayer, will pay more in library taxes than I would if you did something. What should you do? It's not moving shelves or anything like that, Mr. Morissette. What this is, is straight out of the Wisconsin statutes. We've come up with a solution. To ignore this is to cost our three-minutes partners $367,000 next year. So if we do nothing, they pay another 300, $267,000. They can transfer that over to us. Then we can increase our levies so that our money stays home. We also remain as a joint library. So, everything is staying clean. This was the solution we tried to come up with back in March and April. We ran that through one particular statutory exception back then. It didn't fly, because that one needed Department of Revenue approval. Now, by another exception, under the Wisconsin statutes, exception, 3I, under that exception, all we need is a joint library agreement. Well, we have one. All we need to now do is amend it. And there's one question out there, and that is, would this be an equitable redistribution of costs amongst the four partners? Sure it is. We're shifting our county taxes around, and our, we're now playing by the book. What's happened before, in the prior years, is that we haven't been paying the full level that we're supposed to pay. We've, we have been not aware of, overs, we, over, we did not review carefully what the Wisconsin statute's already required of us. Now that's been discovered, and we're trying to come up with, a way to come up with a solution here. This is a solution. I've provided it to Councilman Hoggart, I've provided it to the county, I provided a copy to our mayor, and, as well as to the county administrator, and tonight I'm going to provide a copy to Hudson Star Observer and to Hudson Patch. Because I think we have a solution, and I think to do nothing about this is a big mistake.
Can I ask why the rest of us didn't see it? I mean, you're asking us to make a decision on something we've not even seen.
I would...
And I don't think we're doing nothing.
They recommended it got forwarded to everybody, so I don't know what happened there. I wasn't trained with all...
I don't think we're doing nothing. I think that's a mistake in what we're doing.
I'll, I'll read my paragraph, if I could. Mr. Hoggart also requested that this information be distributed to all the members of the common council in advance of the meeting tonight. Mayor Burchill, please arrange for that to occur. So I did send a copy to our mayor, and then I went back to work at my law firm, thinking that it was going to get done. I'm sorry, I didn't see to it that it was circulated. I tried. Okay?
Yeah, because, well, quick, because he answered me.
This is a pretty quick read.
This is what I have for all the decisions I make tonight, okay?
Here's the solution right here.
If I would have that information, the decision could have been a little more palatable.
And I think what you were saying, Roy, is, it's not off the table. It's just, we're not choosing to do one of these other things. We're not choosing to pursue exemption.
Well, then, don't take any action tonight.
No, no, we can take action tonight and change our mind in two weeks.
Right.
Mr. Schoburg, I have a question for you. Hasn't the, the library voted to disband, recommend disbanding the joint library? Hasn't the Board of Directors voted?
That was part of the June proposal, correct?
Yes or no? Yes.
Yes.
So now you're changing that? Or is, has the board changed its theory that we should continue to be a joint library? Or are you, are you speaking for the entire board, or is it just you now?
The Board of Directors has not, Board of Trustees has not changed that resolution.
Okay.
It's still recommended that the library be disbanded, and that it become a municipal library, for reasons such as tonight, there's three other meetings going on on this subject under a tight timeline, and I can't be in all three places. So when you have four owners trying to run a library, there's no way to conduct business.
Well, that's why the county should just do the tax. I mean, I don't understand why we're bartering with this.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mr. Schoburg? Roy, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I, I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Just hate losing control of that money. And I appreciate...
If something can be put together, if something, I don't think we can go through another meeting of doing, of not taking action on it. If something can be put together and be presented, do we have one more shot at it?
We have a meeting on the 17th.
Yep.
Okay, and one more question, because you hate losing, I get that. The other three municipalities have to agree to that plan as well. And we don't even know if it's been, if it's been given to them or presented to them, so why would we agree to a plan that we don't know that they've even talked about? But what every municipality is talking about tonight is a situation with the county taxation. So we might as well move forward with that until we hear from the other municipalities.
I would just like to say that, just trying to find solutions, you know, less than a deal.
Any other comments, suggestions? We have a motion on the floor and a second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, consider proposal for purchase of new ambulance. Who's going to take this? Lori, Kim, or Neil?
I'll start it out.
Okay.
EMS is sorely in need of a new ambulance. You know, that we came to the full council about a year ago and borrowed money for the purchase of that, borrowed it at 3%. We're looking at a near image of that loan. The purchase being made would be a demo vehicle, so it would have low mileage on it, but it does give us a break on the price. We currently have our name on a truck, you know, it's going to be built. There is a provision in our agreement within EMS that if any partner leaves the commission, or if there's a shortfall in cash flow, that, that would be made up at the end of the year by each municipality based on call percentages. So the city's not bearing, you know, the burden of that principle. All the partners realize that they're obligated to repay it. Neil's been doing an excellent job showing us what our financials are every month. Cash flow is looking better than it has, and Neil, I'll let you touch on some of the details if you'd like, please.
If, if you look at the, I provided some financial information with, regarding the St. Croix, Hudson-St. Croix EMS, and I think last year was probably the best benchmark year. And I mean, you, with the state of Medicare, Medicaid, you know, there's no guarantees in terms of future funding. But I think one of the things in there, if you look at the statement of cash flows, is probably the best indicator in terms of what has happened in the past year. And I think if you look at it, in quick summary, the ambulance started out the year with roughly $190,000 in 2011. Through their operations, it generated $204,000. Of that, they ended up getting an advance for the purchase of a similar unit from the city, but they also have repaid the city part of that. And additionally, they reinvested roughly $65,000 of their unit into outfitting the vehicle and to buying a chase vehicle. But I think the real key in there is that if you look at what has come from operations, last year was, you know, it generated $204,000. And you say, what debt do they have? Well, the debt they have right now is to the city, to the tune of, on the existing loan of about $25,000 a year. And then this would add about another $30,000 a year. So of that 204 last year, if this were to be approved, where we would, where we would provide the financing, roughly 55 or a quarter of their cash, of their operating cash flow would be coming, you know, back to the city in terms of repayment. You know, and, you know, obviously, the number of runs they do in their, you know, their financial, you know, position is, is always subject to, you know, it's not, it's not a guaranteed, it's not always locked in. But I think there is, if you look at what's your debt service coverage, I think it's pretty good. Additionally, I mean, if you're looking at, you know, assuming, you know, that's quote "the credit risk." If you look at, you know, the investment for us over a five-year period, 3% is kind of unheard of these nowadays, and that's why I think if you look at, you know, five-year, you know, agency, you know, federal government, you know, bonds or agency bonds, which are kind of the premier credits, you know, you're looking at less than 1% return.
So how are you rating this particular bond, Neil?
I like the debt service coverage ratio, you know, you know, four times, that service coverage isn't bad.
And I, I will say this, Kim, if you want to add something, feel free, but, you know, we are looking hard at the overall fleet. If we're going to change the model that we're using for service, but any of those changes that might occur don't eliminate the need for an ambulance. You know, we're looking at chase vehicles, no chase vehicles, a couple of different ideas, but all of them still require that we have three working ambulances. So, do you want to add anything, Kim? Okay.
I, I have a, one question. Our trips to the cities, again, non-emergency trips from the hospital. You get a call from the hospital, we want a transport, it's a Medicare patient. How much do we lose on that particular case? I mean, what's our reimbursement from Medicare? $260, $280?
On an average, I think Medicare, Medicare or Medicaid, I think the numbers are probably confused in my mind. One's about 20% on a dollar we get back, the other one's about 27% on a dollar.
So, we have an $800, $160 we get on an $800 bill? Is that rough idea?
Roughly.
So my question is, and I've always wanted to ask this question, and so, Kim, you're on the spot, why do we do them? I mean, don't we send two, we send two paramedics with it, or one?
One paramedic.
One paramedic and the vehicle?
Yep.
And we drive to St. Paul on a non-emergency transfer?
Yep.
And we're using up our ambulance? I mean, we're putting miles on it, we've got somebody gone, and the ambulance is gone.
Yep. And we don't do them unless we have another paramedic back in town here, because obviously the 911 area is our primary coverage area, so we won't leave it unstaffed. And then the other insurance will pick up as well now if it is just Medicare, medic, you know?
Right.
We obviously run that risk of not getting obviously as much money back, but it's still guaranteed revenue, and it's money that we didn't have before, where we take someone without insurance, or we don't have anybody.
Sure.
We're out completely, where if we take someone with Medicare, we're guaranteed at least something.
But, my point, at least the way I look at things, which may be different, is making that ambulance leave the spot here, drive up to the hospital and drive in, we lose money on it every time we, so we can't make it up in volume. So maybe that's something we should look real hard at, whether or not we do those, because it wears out our ambulance, and we lose an ambulance of service. So, I don't know if I'm just looking at it differently...
No matter what, we're getting money out of it.
Uh-huh.
I mean...
But if it costs us $350 to send that ambulance over there, and we're getting $160 back, that's a bad investment. That's a bad deal, in my opinion.
You had all the numbers.
Yep.
How many miles do we put on an ambulance in a year, do we know?
What's a rough number? Miles per year?
Miles per year?
Roughly.
The new truck we just bought last year in August, I got $27,000 on it already.
And that's one of the big ones, not a chase?
Right.
That's a brand-new one.
But in fairness, that truck's being used a little more because this other one's about to fall into the street.
Yeah, most people want to use that brand-new one now because just the durability of it, and it knows that we're going to make it to the cities with it. Obviously, it's just kind of the thing where we can't rotate them all the time, and we can't consistently put them on a rotating basis to try and put more miles on each one, because everyone wants a more comfortable ride, so we're putting them in a brand-new ambulance.
I mean, is there, is there such a thing as we use our oldest vehicle?
We tried that.
For those?
We tried that, and it didn't work, because in all honesty, I guess if one of your family members had someone with a broken leg or a broken pelvis, the last thing you want them in is one of our older ambulances having a rough ride, and us having to just give them more pain meds, than, you know, having a new ambulance where it's going to be a smoother ride with less likely of having to give them more pain meds.
I'm just saying, when you're comparing a non-emergency transfer versus a potential
I'm just saying, when you're comparing a non-emergency transfer versus a potential need for an emergency.
And then we leave, we tried, like I said, we tried that, but we were running into so many circumstances where the patient itself just warrants a much smoother ride.
Okay.
So I think Alan's kind of on to something with making, or losing money on these transports, because, you know, if it's cost so much in gas, and so much to wear and tear on our ambulance, and so much, you know, and yet we're only getting that back, you know, margin of what we should. What would the hospital's other option be if you looked into reducing that?
Call a different service, wouldn't they? Couldn't they call Ramsey?
Yeah, they would have to call their own.
Yep.
Get a different service in here.
Do you have a contract with the hospital, or it's just kind of?
It's just kind of, they call us and kind of keep it within the community, because we have worked with them for so much, for so long, and.
We're off topic here a little bit.
No, yeah, sorry.
But as far as replacing the ambulance, I guess.
Well, it's costing us a lot of money.
Right.
And then having to invest in a large expense.
Right.
What percentage of them are Medicare, do you know? I mean, of the transports, are they mostly Medicare, or are they? Just curious.
If I had to guess, I'd guess anywhere between like 30 and 40% are probably on Medicare.
Is that about right, Neil?
Was it?
I just went, I saw Neil's wheels turning.
I have to take a look at it. I think one thing, you know, when you look at the cost, you know, you look at what's our fixed cost, what's the variable cost. And I think the one thing that, and I, you know, and Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, or Kim, that we're paying the people who are doing the transporting, the staff, we're paying them whether they're on a run or not. So they're a fixed cost. So your real variable costs are really your transportation costs to and from. So it's not like it's costing us more to staff that ambulance. And I think, you know, in this conversation, that's really important, that we're paying them regardless.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Is there a motion on the table, or?
I don't know. I don't think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I mean, it is a service we're providing to our community. It sounds like Medicare must be our older citizens that are taking advantage of that, going to other care facilities. Is that, that's older citizens in our community taking advantage, going to Regions or United, or?
Not all, just elderly, but yeah, all of our citizens here in town.
But it's not a choice of the citizen that's directed by the doctor up at the hospital. Because Hudson only offers so much care, and if they need more expanded care, then they got to go to a bigger hospital to get that, where it's there 24/7, unlike Hudson.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider or request to fill part-time deputy municipal clerk position?
We have Dana Thompson, who's been our deputy clerk for about two years, has taken a full-time job. Sue Garrity has recommended that any position that opens up has to come back to council for, to be filled, is what we can fill it. Sue Garrity, Judge Garrity recommended to be filled, and the finance committee approved her recommendation.
Questions? Comments?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update on projects. Karen?
I'll start with update on the 2012 street improvement project. Carmichael Road has been milled and overlaid. We are going to be doing the pavement markings tomorrow. And I know Tom has been in discussion about trying to extend the turn lane going into the school because of backup issues on Carmichael and Vine. And Tom came up with a good idea. There's a right turn lane that currently goes into the government center. There's two right turn lanes. There's a north one and a south one. We're actually going to remove that turn lane going, the north turn lane that takes a right into the government center, and use that for the southbound traffic. Then we can push one through lane for northbound and add approximately 150 feet to the turn lane into the school.
That's just a great idea.
Thank you. That's Tom's idea. And we looked at it to look at the tapers and everything, and it will work.
You were there this morning?
Yes.
Watching the flow?
No, I wasn't watching the school flow.
Tom, you were there watching the flow or the traffic, or was someone there?
It's been that way for years.
No, I know, I, I know.
Today was trying to alleviate some of that.
Today was likely a worse than normal.
That's why, that's why.
Not only first day, but no markings.
Right. Right. Well, there's markings. There's temporary markings out there.
But people, when they are waiting, especially at the end of the day to pull in, they're on that gravel all the way back to the, and it, and then people pull out, and.
I used to get a picture every morning.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, there still could be problems. We were able at 150 feet, but it's going to help alleviate some of it. So it will work.
Okay.
On Grandview, the contractor's been checking the gate valves and finding the bolts are corroded and rusty, so he's been replacing those. And he's been able to do it with the water live, so we haven't had to turn off any water to the residents yet. They do understand, though, there's always a chance that it could be an emergency shutdown. But we got one more day of working on the gate valves. And the Lake Malaloos Storm Sewer Outfall Project is out for bid, and we plan on opening the bids on September 13th and bringing it to council on September 17th. On Uline, the sewer service has been installed, and on Procentive, they were installing utilities today.
Are they working on the alley? Karen, you don't have that on here.
No, they haven't started on the alley yet. They're going to get further along on Grandview, and then start to work on the alley.
Any questions for Karen?
Thank you for doing Carmichael by the middle school.
Yeah, well, we'll see how that works.
Have faith.
New business, PowerPoint presentation from the Girl Scouts. Is anyone here from the Girl Scouts?
Jan had a notation. They were coming tonight, so we put it on, but.
Apparently.
Apparently not.
We don't have one. Okay. Proposed meeting schedule is on consent. The request for St. Pat's Walk runs Saturday, September 22nd. Mary, you pulled that?
Yeah, I pulled it, just because it had to skip public safety due to the time restraints. And as, after reviewing the map, what I didn't recognize when I said, "Yeah, go ahead and put it to the full council," was that, it didn't click in my head that they'll be running down Grandview right during the middle of construction time. So I would like, I want to, I want to approve the race, because we, they do this race every year. But I would just like to approve it. I'd like to see if Marty can help them reroute, and maybe they can cross, they'll continue on Vine and cross Grandview.
I thought it said they were going to run on the sidewalk, on Grandview, because of the construction.
Yeah, but it's kind of torn up. I don't know if we're going to take the safety risk of.
They come out and.
Marty can check on it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure if this is a safety risk or not.
If the street is torn up that day, they have to cross the street right at the path, walking path. It looks like that was the.
So maybe they can.
Right.
Right. I just want him to try and, if they need to adjust the route, look at either just going straight down Vine and adding on Oak Ridge Circle up there, or something to, I just want him to look to make sure that, make sure the route is safe, period, is basically what I'm saying. So.
Karen, do you have any idea when that may be torn up, Grandview?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Maybe it's a non-issue.
No, I think it will be an issue. They're going to start tearing it up at the end of this week and doing it in sections.
Patches, yeah.
Yeah. And I, even staying off the sidewalk is a good idea. I would avoid that area completely.
They're ripping it up pretty good right now, just by the sidewalks.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the safety of the runners, and I just think Marty should just kind of, we approve the race if I have the support of that, and then just have Marty kind of work out a different route for them to make up the loss.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business pursuant to Chapter 1985-1E, Wisconsin statute to deliberate negotiation regarding the possible sale of city property at 701st Street. I've talked with Catherine, and we probably don't need to go into closed session on the first part of this, on whether or not there's any need or any, get the feel for the council on whether or not you have any desire to sell the property. If we're going to go into closed session about negotiating the price and how we're going to sell it, then we'll go into closed session. But my purpose in this is whether or not there's any desire to get a price. I talked with the president of the library today, and she said they don't have, at this point, any desire to purchase the building. Is what she told me today.
I would like us to see what we can come up with. I mean, obviously, it's going to be contingent upon the fact that there's renters, the police department and the library. But we need to prepare for a future public safety building, which I think was the ultimate plan when the previous council voted for the favor of this library. I wasn't on, but that's what I understood, that the ultimate plan was to sell it to the library, and then try and build a public safety building or something. If I'm wrong, someone correct me. But, so I think in this market, it may take some time to sell, and to, you know, that we should really start considering what we're going to do.
So when you say there's no interest in purchasing the library, is that a library board decision, or, I mean, from, that the.
I would think they were the.
You're saying the library is not interested in pursuing purchase? Are they interested in being?
They have done nothing at this point, from what she told me today.
Okay. And so are they looking, are they thinking they would be a long-term tenant?
I would, that's up to the library. We have a lease agreement that we, it has to be honored.
Right.
Yep.
There's three years left on it, and there's five more option, a five-year option.
There's three years left on it.
Two and a half.
The first five-year term, and then they have the option to renew the lease for another five years. There's five years within which they can exercise an option to purchase. That is not renewable unless the city agrees.
But our police don't have that same restriction.
Because we own the building.
We own the building.
We own the building. That's my point. So my point is that if we're able to sell it, make money, then what we need to make to put towards a capital project such as a new public safety building.
Which would get into pricing mechanism, would be, what kind of rent are you getting?
Right, right.
Would be a pricing issue that I'd like to do in closed session.
Right, of course. And then we won't have to worry about renting out this other building, because it wouldn't be our responsibility to rent out.
Well, I don't want to be argumentative.
Sure you do.
My, you know, have properties and holdings in other places, and we all know that this is not like the world's greatest economy right now.
No.
It's not going to rocket back up. However, even in the short term, even waiting, it's going to produce greater revenues. We do have some rent coming. I don't know if the building's cash flowing or not.
No, we're about $80,000 a year short.
Because we're not charging the police.
Correct.
But we do not have funds to build a new public safety building, and it might be smart to have everyone move into that building prior to the sale of the building, unless a new sale would. To me, it just seems like, I don't know, it's just not time to turn that egg. It just seems like something that we should continue to use as an asset for a while.
Okay.
We're not saying that the library won't exist. We're saying we won't own the building.
I totally appreciate that. I'm saying I would rather own it than to sell it.
And I'm looking for ways to cover our losses that we're experiencing in that particular item, and probably would be offset by what we'd have to charge rent for the police department. But long-term, we would free up money for other purposes. That building's been basically paid for. I believe all, you know, we're not borrowing any money on it right now. So there would be, whatever the purchase price would be, available for a public safety building.
Yep. The only advance was from sewer, and we repaid that.
Can't we use equity in the building to pay for a new, or to finance a public safety building?
Correct.
Yeah, if we sell the building, we can use that money to finance a new public safety building. That's what I said, really. That was my point.
No, he's saying borrow.
We still can use the.
Oh, borrow against it?
Equity of the.
We don't need to do, use equity in one, because we have borrowing capacity under the state law.
That's what I thought.
But why borrow when we can sell and, not borrow?
Right.
Why would we borrow more than we have to?
I'd just like to own real estate. That's a good thing.
Okay. Any other thoughts? I, you know, that's, it's your call.
I don't understand what would be wrong into exploring, you know, the option of selling it. I mean, it's not going to sell tomorrow, obviously. It doesn't cost us anything to have it on the market.
Or to get a potential pricing situation, how much we could actually, what would be a market value for that property? I don't have a clue. It'll be based on the rents.
So, I guess I feel like I need to ask my question again. Did they, I mean, are they, I know they haven't raised a great deal of money, but are they really saying they're not interested in pursuing the purchase? They're not, or they're not able to foresee how they might be able to? Or what are we looking at? Because, but you're right. I mean, we can't wait until the five-year lease is up and then decide what we're going to do, because our plan may need to be.
It's eighteen months away right now. And at that point, we could sell at any time with the option for purchase. Library has that option to purchase it. And a buyer would, I think it would be hard to sell with that option that's there right now. But, you know, you don't start trying to make a sale.
In the last hour, right.
Last hour. You try and do a little planning.
Well, it sounds like you all want to go into closed session.
Well, that's, that's up to you folks, if you want to go into closed session.
Well, we keep talking about it, might as well go. I'll make the motion to go into closed session if it goes or goes.
I'll second.
May I make a comment before you do?
Real quick.
Right.
The library is very interested in buying that building if we remain a joint library. Of course, then it makes sense. Before we can entertain that, we have to get our finances in order. It would be embarrassing to approach our foundations before we can pay our bills. So that's why we've had to hold off on that. If we remain, if we switch to a municipal library, which might happen next year, if the other municipalities can't afford to become exempt, then it wouldn't make sense for us to sell the building that we would need to operate as a library, municipal library. So if we convert over to a municipal library, then we already own it, and we don't have to, the library wouldn't be buying it from the city, because the city owns it, just like it is now for the, for the police. But I talked to Barb Peterson, our president, this afternoon. She told me of her conversation with Alan Burchill. And Alan's, Alan's correct in that we don't have a present plan to buy it. We haven't been able to get that. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion, and a second to go into closed session. Roll call.
To Wickle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggart?
Yes.
Okay.